No. I said it earlier, but Rose won't be with us, or not Rose, Rose is here, Rick won't be here tonight. So I'm kind of doing, you know, trying to take notes as I'm going through it, so. A little additional patience with the night, one shorthanded.
Yeah, darling, could I see a mail from you the next day after our last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, City of Flemish Planning Commission Meeting called order. The table seems to have a little over there. We have a roll call. Darlene Rose.
Here.
Maya Justin.
Here.
Van Hudsaker.
Here.
Haley Green. John Barlow.
Here.
Gary Connor.
Here.
And Council Liaison Ruth Coggi.
Here.
Snap, we've got Chase Burgreave and. So our first order of business tonight is to look at proposed zoning changes. We looked at this map carefully a number of times before, but never exhaustively. Residential side. And I'll say, I wasn't here the last time. So we also want to talk about the climate friendly area overlay to our proposed zoning. But I'd like to hold that until after we go through. What would like it to look like, because there are a lot of potential radical trails in the climate friendly discussion. And I'd like to start by establishing what we'd like it to look like if that didn't exist.
If that didn't exist.
Yeah, if that didn't exist. What, what do we want the zoning to look like? Because I think we, it's easier for us to have a common understanding of the zoning as it exists today than all the permutations of the climate friendly area.
So is that to suggest we might consider changing or moving climate area?
Yes.
Okay.
It was stated last meeting that it is not set in stone yet. And there were quite a few questions and frankly, a few surprises last time to me, even though I've heard several presentations on it. So, and there was a desire to discuss it more, which I had cut off because we had other topics to go through, so I want to get back to that. You want to lead us off?
Sure. So maybe we'll start where we started with commercial and industrial, and then we can talk through residential, which will be new for folks. But I think just in review, as we're moving forward here. The C1 is our central commercial. It's intended to be a depth oriented. So it limits the amount of drive-throughs and heavy traffic focused type businesses and, and things. It strongly encourages and requires, you know, buildings to be right up in the front of the road, pedestrian friendly. Friendly to bicycle vehicle transit traffic. It does allow for mixed use, so you can have residential in the second, third floor and above. But that commercial first floor is reserved against as the intent, and we're not talking climate friendly area, we're just talking the C1 for city zoning. So commercial on the first floor, residential up above, and those commercial businesses, there's some cave outs to what's allowed there and what's not. Mostly we're looking at, again, retail, restaurants. And a customer service or goods exchange in that C1. The C2 expands out more, it's just the general commercial. It's going to allow for pretty much everything in the C1. There was some discussion about a couple of exceptions there, but for the most part, anything in the C1 can expand out into that C2 area. But it's also going to provide for the option of having some parking between the buildings and the road. Where appropriate, it's going to allow for greater use or greater mix of services, including drive-throughs, automobile centric. Services like auto detailing and those types of things, auto repair even in some situations. So. Little bit less dependent on pedestrians, bicycles, transit, a little more open, a little more vehicle friendly. But still generally commercial, you're looking retail, commercial activity, sales services, that type of thing. The C3 that we discussed, we, we named regional commercial. And this was envisioned to be larger lots that would allow for larger types of mixed commercial development, specifically allowing for larger retail stores. So larger footprints, more parking requirements. Obviously, we want them nearby transit and another, you know, tra- transit, bicycle, et cetera. But really, this is going to be your larger shopping centers where there's a little reliance on vehicles. And there's a little bit more of a regional draw to these areas. So shopping centers, grocery stores, that type of thing, not so much your small downtown retail shop, but much larger complexes in that C3. We did talk about C3 excluding some of the things that would be allowed in C1 and C2. We also talked about not allowing for residential in the C3, that we weren't going to be stacking apartments on top of Fred Meyers and Winco's, right? That this was going to be primarily just a commercial zoned area without the residential mixed in with it. So it was commercial, generally speaking, and as we kind of had that mutual understanding, we kind of went through and laid out some areas to rezone to C3. Areas that were C1 now that could be expanded to expand out that downtown core. Right now, it's two blocks wide and a block, you know, half a block north and a half blocks south of Main Street. So we talked about expanding that up and out. And then identified mostly pretty much everything between Applegate and Main Street along the couplet was decided that should be commercial. There was some industrial and maybe even some, I don't think there was an eight or two in there, I think it was some light industrial that was mixed in there. And we wanted to see all of that get converted to the, or the downtown commercial. I think those are primary changes. Does anybody want to add to anything maybe I've left out as kind of more general comments on commercial that you think are important to note?
Well, yeah, well, it's, it's just a difference of what we have there. In that, and I, and I said it before, is I would, until. What we're doing is expanding commercials so much that you almost can have anything anywhere. And like for the downtown area, it's not going to be there because people will go where there's new stuff. And we won't, we won't get the development in the downtown that we'd like. The same thing with the C2 to the C3, allowing as much stuff like that you described in the C3 will ruin the C2. Because it won't happen there, it'll go out there on the highways. And that's just how it will work out. And it. I, I wish we had the lady here that explained that many, many years ago. You got to, like even in the C1, you've got to make them the developments there. If you want it to, to actually develop, you can't let it be somewhere else. I don't have the statistics or anything like that, but the, the point they were making is you can, if it's a, a new area, that's where everybody would want to go. It won't want to go where it's old and has to be redeveloped or whatever. So, and I know I'm, I'm in the minority of it, but that, that's still how I feel about it.
Yeah, and I appreciate you bringing up that kind of minority view. And I, I, you know, I don't know if majority, minority, it was a point of view that's been out there, but I, I think I was kind of speaking, generally speaking, is where we're at. And there's still room to deliberate on some of the specifics there. But generally speaking, those were kind of the three different commercial zones and what we were talking through.
I wonder if I could just ask for a point of clarification. When you say development, are you speaking of commercial development or residential?
No, the, in that, that's an issue, issue of commercial, yeah, only. It might, I don't, it might be light industrial, but I, I don't think so much it would be, it would be more just a commercial issue.
The other main point I'll bring out is we did look at the office residential zoning, which is right now kind of set up to be a mixed use within that lot. It's not like one lot is commercial and one lot is residential. Right now, office residential allows for commercial use on the first floor, residential up above. We've decided to move away from that and just again, make the C1 and C2 allow for that mixed use or allow for commercial or for commercial first floor and residential up above. So that a lot of the office residential area along College Street, which was again, as we fall back was. That was zoned office residential, the thought at the time was that that was going to be part of the couplet that ODOT was going to put through, was going to run up on College Street. And so we wanted to rezone that from the houses that were there to more of a mixed use office residential, commercial use. That's not where the couplet ended up going, so we're looking to essentially correct that zoning now to reflect the existing neighborhood, which is more of an R2 type neighborhood. And we can talk residential here in just a few minutes. But you'll note all of the areas in black highlight along College Street, which is right here, if you're following along on the TV. It used to be office residential and the recommendation is to make this R2 at this point, but we've not really clearly defined R2 yet, so. Commercial industrial, we used to have a, and you'll still see on here, a light industrial, heavy industrial and industrial park. We've moved away from industrial park and just limited now to light industrial, heavy industrial. We've made distinctions there, what light industrial is and what heavy industrial is. They're fairly rational, I think, on what is heavy and what's light. And we went through the table of what the commission felt was a heavy use versus a light industrial use. And then map wise, you'll just see a few locations. There was a large heavier, or, or R3 lot down here in the southwest corner that we looked to make light industrial. The industrial park that used to be out here in the north end town is now looking like, the recommendation is to go light industrial there. I don't remember if these aren't changed, so they were there. Anyway, there's only just a couple of spots on the industrial where it made some changes. We did look at taking this large industrial piece that was up here east of 19th Street. Rezoning that from industrial to public use because it's got a conservation easement on it, which won't allow for any type of development. So we don't want that to be seen as future industrial land when the reality is it's going to remain open space. For the foreseeable future, so. I think those are the main changes there for industrial. Any comments or additions on industrial? Except there, I was pretty general, but we spent a lot of time going through the allowed use table, and I think that answered a lot of those questions and we'll continue to develop that. Okay, so that brings us to residential. So currently, I'll say current and then I'll give some of my thoughts. Currently, we have R1, R2, R3. R1 is low density residential, it allows for single family detached homes. It does allow for duplexes, as long as it's on a corner lot within a development and that corner lot is at least 10,000 square feet. The minimum lot size in the R1 is 7,000 square feet for Flemish. Fairly common number, we're seeing more and more cities go a little bit smaller than that. Some are still holding out and, you know, Millard Court, I think it's like 10,000 square foot minimum for low density residential. That seems to be a little bit more of an anomaly, seven's kind of about there. And again, we're seeing more and more rezones where that number's getting a little bit smaller. So that you can fit more homes in a subdivision and help the cost come down. It's, it really is a cost thing and, and I think people are seeing. We're seeing less demand in the market, maybe less affordable. People can't afford the 7,000 square foot lot anymore, and so we're looking at smaller lots. Just a reflection of cost as much as anything else. So that's our, our one prelim, it does allow for accessory dwelling units. By state law, cities with more than 25,000 a population have to allow for duplexes in any of their residential zones. We're under that threshold, so we're not required to do that. We don't have to require duplexes in our R1. Our code has always, at least as long as I've been familiar with it, allowed for those duplexes on corner lots of 10,000 or more. So you get a little bit of mix of some duplexes in the R1 low density zone, but not a lot. And there's only so many corners, right? So a little bit, but not a lot in there. The R2 is what targets smaller lots, you can go down maximum, our minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet, so a thousand square foot smaller. Not a significant difference, most people look at 7,000 square foot lot and a 6,000 square foot lot, probably couldn't tell the difference, just looking at it from across the street. Not significantly smaller, but it allows for duplexes and triplexes. It allows for townhomes, it allows for row houses. So there's different definitions for each of those, but essentially you're looking for a little bit more dense and more traditional duplex townhome that's set up within the R2. It also would allow for just, you know, smaller footprint lots and smaller footprint homes to go for, you know, your setbacks are the same. We're still at five foot side yard and 15 to the door and 15 backyard setback. So you make your lot a thousand square foot bigger than the house that's sitting on it, it's going to be that much smaller too. And typically going to be two stories to, to get the full size out of it. So that's what R2 currently kind of looks like. Duplexes, triplex, we don't allow for multi-family apartments, so a fourplex or greater is not allowed in the R2 currently. It is limited to duplexes, triplexes and single family attached, detached. We do allow for accessory dwelling units. However, state laws as accessory dwelling units are required to be allowed for a single family residential, not for duplexes. So if you have a lot in the R2 with a duplex, there's no requirement allowing, there's no state law that requires us to allow you to put an ADU on it. Code. Lot, currently addressed, no ADUs are an outright allowed use. Triplexes. By ours, it's, it's lot cover, yeah, total lot size, lot coverage.
So the lot's not big enough, they can't install an ADU.
I've got a question about the lot coverage. Lot coverage is only the building itself along with the overhangs. It does not include driveways or any other hard surfaces.
Correct.
Which is different than what I've been used to in some other jurisdictions.
Right, we count driveways and that when we're looking at like an previous surface, but we don't look at it when we're talking about lot coverage for residential dwelling. Yeah. But you'll see our numbers are a little bit different than other jurisdictions because of that as well, so it's accounted for. So. Yeah, so you're going to look at, when we're talking lot coverage, we mean for. You know, the minimum lot size again is going to be 6,000 square feet. For a duplex, I believe you have to have a minimum of 8,500 square feet. So you don't have to have six and six, you don't have to have 1,200 square feet for a duplex, significantly less than that. I think it's the eight fifty, eight hundred and fifty, eight thousand five hundred square feet for a duplex. And then for each additional unit, if you want to go from duplex to triplex, it's another 2,500 square feet on top of that duplex amount. So, you know, that's usually what affects the ADU is you're going to have, you know, an 8,000 or 9,000 square foot lot with a duplex on it. And in order to add that third dwelling unit, whether it be an ADU or that third unit to make it a triplex. You won't have the square footage in your lot in order to accommodate that third dwelling unit, whether it's attached or detached. So that's what's preventing ADUs and duplexes right now, is typically just that lot size. If you had a really big lot with a duplex, you could do it. And our code doesn't really care whether it's an ADU or a triplex, or it's a triplex attached or a triplex that's all detached. Our code doesn't really differentiate between attached or detached, it's how many dwelling units are on the space attached or not. Which again, is a little bit unique to our code currently. Other, in other jurisdictions, you'll see a big deal made about breezeways and things between. Because technically, if you've got a duplex and they have a shared roof that creates some breezeway, then they're attached, they're one unit. Well, they're not one unit, they're two units with a breezeway, but you'll see that built in other communities because it has to be, a unit has to be the duplex, right? In Flemish, whether they're attached or detached, the, the, the impact on the land is the same. You've got two dwelling units there, whether they're attached or not, our code does a distinction. Which again, a little unique to our code, but it's a nice little, yeah, interesting to talk about. If you're geeky on planning. Let me stay on R2 for just, well, no, let me go to R3 and then I'll come back to R2 a little bit. R3 right now is heavy density, it's our high density residential, it's our highest density that's allowed. Lot size for a single family home drops down to 5,000 square feet. And so you'll see like North 13th Street, a lot of those homes that were sectioned off or used to be a large property, they've siphoned off, you know, exactly 5,000 square feet. Another home and another 5,000 square feet, another home. And so you'll see that kind of, kind of more condensed looking neighborhood up North 13th Street because that, or North 12th Street, excuse me. Because you've seen those 5,000 square foot lots kind of get partitioned off up there. What it's really intended to encourage is that multifamily housing. And so, let me stay with where we're at. So 5,000 square foot minimum, it does allow for duplexes, it allows for triplexes, there's minimum lot sizes for duplex, minimum lot size for triplex. And then it allows for the multifamily. So where we have our larger apartment complexes, these are where we're finding our R3 zoning. And it's going to be. And then an additional X number of square feet per additional unit. A few, several years ago now, we adopted some provisions that allow for higher density if your units are smaller. So if you're adding one and two bedroom units, the added square footage you need for your total development is less than if you're adding three bedroom units, right? Which kind of makes some sense if you're doing three bedroom units. That should be more square footage, if you're only doing one and two bedrooms or studios, your added space per unit should be relatively smaller. And so that got adopted, I would say maybe seven or eight years ago. It seems to, we've utilized that a couple of different times on two developments to allow for a little bit higher density when that's one and two bedroom unit apartment. We. Only have a few areas in town inside city limits that are zoned R3. Two of the largest ones are zoned R3, but utilized for single family residential detached housing. North 12th Street already mentioned, and then down along Chapel Drive, the Millpon Crossing subdivision. Was approved with the condition that all, originally approved with the condition that all of the homes be single family residential. The city just come off of the heels of both Oak Springs and Boulevard Apartments being approved at the same planning commission meeting. A little trivia for you. Those both came in at the same time, we scheduled them and we brought through and I believe Oak Springs came first and then Boulevard came second. But both of those apartment complexes were approved at the same planning commission meeting. And all the same people were mad and all the same people were happy. And it, it worked out, but it ended up being, you know, 350 something new units of multifamily residential that got approved. And then Boulevard Apartment, or then Millpon came in and the planning commission was very adverse to any talk about more apartment complexes. And so they said, if you come in, we'll give you the higher density that allows for smaller lots, smaller homes. But we don't want any attached housing, we want it to all be single family residential, that's what we do in the community, more single family residential. They came back after phase one and phase two, they were looking at their phase three and phase four development and came back with a major modification. So came back to the planning commission and they got approval to amend their original design to include some townhomes in phase three and phase four. Which again, got approved and so for phase three and phase four, the current plan is there'll be a mix of single family detached and townhomes, essentially like an eight. Eight long row homes or townhomes that will be attached, but on separate lots. So separate lots, separate owners, but they'll be an attached one structure. So that's what we'll start seeing in phase three and phase four of Millpon Crossing. Pretty unique to Flemish to have that, we don't see that in a lot of other places, especially anything newer. Pretty new for Flemish. That's what we're looking at. Outside of those two kind of larger developments, you've got again, Boulevard Apartments out on the far east end of town. And then we looked at some of the, what was previously industrial space on either side of 20th Street, east and west of 20th. We looked at targeting that as some potential high density residential areas. And I think one. It's going to have is to identify other areas within the city that could handle high density residential. Now let me talk about what I envisioned for R3 and what I envisioned for R2, because I think it's a good segue. What we heard during our housing needs analysis from Equino northwest was a, a recommendation that our R3. Limit development to own, to, to be required to be multifamily, that we have a minimum number of units per acre for the R3. And I believe the number they put out there is like 24, 25 units per acre minimum. So that we don't end up with situations like Millpon Crossing or North Wall Street, where you've got single family residential detached housing in the R3 zone, right? If you're going to zone the R3 and we're planning for the future where the high density is going to be, then we need to ensure that that's what goes in as high density residential. That we don't have a developer come in and say, we're just single family housing here, we're not interested in apartments, right? So I think that's good advice, I think it's something that we look at. I'm not going to make any recommendations on those exact numbers, but as we're moving forward, I'd like input from the planning commission on. The notion of making R3 more strict to require high density residential in those zones. So we know where that high density residential is going to end up. Detail there, other than there's some height constraints there, there's some parking considerations we need to make, parking, like Boulevard Apartments and Oak Springs even. Maybe the last one, parking was probably the biggest obstacle they had to deal with was how do we fit this number of units and this number of parking spaces for each unit? The city's current standard is point seven parking spaces for every one unit of apartments. So you can do the math there, right? For 288 units in Boulevard Apartments, that's a lot of parking for them to figure out how to get around all of their buildings and to structure all of that. And my son lives there currently, those parking spaces are full most every night. It's hard to go visit him after seven o'clock because everybody's home and those parking spaces are all taken. So even as we talk through the city with some new state regulations on what we can require for parking. We're still going to see developers building apartment complexes that are going to put parking in there because they know that that's what many of their tenants have not. Some of their tenants are still going to want to have, I would argue, even if it's in the downtown area and especially if it's out offside of the bus route or walking distances to shopping, et cetera, et cetera. So we may not have the code to require it. I've seen some recent code, I'll talk about some maybe later, I've seen some recently developed code that was done by, well, I'll spill the beans here, but I won't name the city quite yet. The city that just spent over half a million dollars in grants for three different consultants to look at and redo their development code. You get Chase and I, and we haven't spent nearly that much money, right? So it's, but the benefit of that is we've got some model coding, which that's out in the city, in the state of Oregon, on a city of population about our size. They are up in the metro, so there's some differences, some different standards they have in metro doing, dealing with density that we don't have to comply with, that they do have to comply with. But outside of that, it's some very good language that we can use as reference when we're looking at developer code because it's been through DLCD, it's been through 3GAS consulting. It's been through these professional planners that are working statewide, looking at all of the new requirements and they've got these in there. So I think it's a better template than like, what does Corvallis do? Or what does their village do? I mean, this is, I think it'll be a little bit easier language for Chase and I to use when we're looking to not wholesale input, but when we're looking to full language that we can relate to that we know is going to live up to current state standards and help us be compliant.
And be relevant for current, and be relevant for Flemish and what we're currently doing. And current developer trends.
Yes, yes. So we'll look to that, their code as an example, in their R3, they have not parking requirements, but they say, if you're going to provide parking, here's the standards of that. They have, um, not parking requirements, but say if you're going to provide parking, here's the standards of that parking that you have to provide. So you can't require it, but you can require standards if you're going to put it in there, right? If you're gonna put a parking lot in, you can't. Roll stalls without some piece of landscaping there, right, cause we don't want just a big huge. Asphalt driveway or asphalt parking space, if you're gonna have a parking lot, here's our standards for parking lot. We can't require you to put it, but if you are, here's our standards. So some of those technicality type stuff they've worked through already, which is nice for us, so. We'll still need to look at that language, my point kinda for all that is even. Though we may not have things that we can't require anymore, there's still standards that we need to adopt that are gonna be compliant with those. Non-re requirements, right, so. So we'll look through some of those caveats, but. In my view, that R three can be very specific, I I'm not opposed to looking at. Identity, whether it be apartments or it be condominium or it be a shared, you know, land trust. I mean, there's different mechanisms for getting multifamily housing. But essentially, we're talking about from a land use perspective, density, how many people in this amount of space? And that means what size does the water line need to be, what size does the sewer line need to be, what is the traffic pattern around there need to look like? You know, do we have an off ramp, do we, all of those things are impacted by number of units and whether it's up or it's out or it's whatever, it's how many people are we talking about for that space? And we need to know it from a planning perspective, so we can plan for that from a public works perspective. That's R three, let me give you a couple more thoughts on R two and then I'm gonna. Get some feedback here. The R two, I first, well, I'm gonna drop, R one, I don't see us needing to change a whole lot, other than as I alluded to, we might consider a little bit smaller. Minimum. Size, we're at seven thousand now. If you, you know, which gets you to five units, five. Lots per acre. If you can drop that down to six, five, eight, now you can get six units per acre, if you can get six lots per acre instead of five, that makes the cost of each of those. Your market's gonna drive the price, but if we can help the cost come down a little bit, hopefully that in the long term will help with costs as well. There's a little chicken and egg dichotomy there that I won't go into, but. Intent is if you can get them smaller and people are still willing to buy them on the market, that kinda helps everybody. It doesn't preclude a developer from coming in and building seven thousand or eight thousand square foot lots, but that it also allows for a developer coming to be able to build six thousand square foot lots. With a little bit smaller. That's an option to consider for the R one. I don't think we need to go in on duplexes, I don't think that's the character that necessarily need for the R one. I think the duplex on the corner still works and we can look at that square footage, but I don't see a big overhaul needed in the R one. I see the most. Space to expand and grow the types of development, residential development we allow in town in the R two. I think there's a lot of room to add cottage clusters. Be individual homes on a shared piece of property with a shared common area. Um, and you can do that through easements, through land trusts, there's lots of different, again, there's different tools to make it happen, but essentially you're looking at. Fitting multiple smaller homes with shared community open space, shared parking area. Um, rather than individual lots, they each have to have their own yard, their own parking, their all their own amenities, so. That would be one concept, there's great language that we can look at, I mentioned the city we just did, if they've got a whole section on these cottage clusters, we could very easily adapt it to Philomath. Again, allowing for duplexes, allowing for townhomes, having better language on. Row houses and where those are allowed. Stack houses, which would be, you know, one home on top of another. And how those could work. I I think our code right now is pretty narrow when we define duplexes, triplexes, even townhomes. And there's a lot of room to expand that and allowing the R two. And looking at the map with the R two that we're looking at along College Street, the R two. There, you know, south and seventeenth and eighteenth and west of nineteenth street. There's a lot of room there for redevelopment and repurposing those lots. Um, to get a little bit higher densities where we've got good walkability, we've got good sidewalks, we've got infrastructure there, so. To me, there's a lot of room in that R two for allow for some more of that. As we talk through it, I think, um, twelfth street becomes a great candidate to look to convert to R two. Um, it feels more like that medium density now, it's not apartment complexes. I hope we would never get a large apartment complex up north twelve street, I think it would have too big of an impact on that street. So I think the future use of twelfth street as R two. Feels right and it would allow for a large diversity of development and redevelopment of that. Um, neighborhood as it continues to grow out as well, so. Um, I won't sell a whole lot more on the R two other than just, I think it becomes that middle ground where it's not your traditional low density, single family residential neighborhood. That some people want, right, we still need to be able to provide that, right, and so our code needs to allow for that type of development to still take place. It's not multifamily as in apartment complex or condominium. But then you've got this whole middle area that's kind of in between there that could be really flexible. We can, I will say this, we we can add different development criteria. As in. Building height, building setback, minimum and maximum lot sizes. Depending on what type of development you're doing within that R two zone. For example, we don't have to say, hey, every type of development within R two has to have a ten foot setback. We may say if you're doing townhomes. You can have a zero line setback, you can be right up to the property line for a townhome. That's fine, you just have to have. Access from the rear or something, right, so. You know, depending on what type of development you're doing, we can have different standards for each of those types of development and still be all under that R two zone. Right, we don't have to have these blanket. Setbacks and height restrictions to the zone, we'll make those relative to the development type, not the zone. Our code right now, most of our R one, here's your height restriction, here's your, you know, all of that's based on what zone you're in, not what type of development you're actually doing and it makes the development. Much more difficult to do, cause you got a bit within this envelope of the development code right now. So that's. Where we are for residential, that's where I envision residential potentially going. Nothing is set there yet, I do have some hope in some newer code language that we can reference and help integrate a little bit as we're going forward and talking with you. Um, the last little bit I'll add here is that. Um, I really like the section that they have adopted on their planned unit developments, we've talked about that, Pat, talked about that a lot. And bluntly, a planned unit development is essentially telling the city, we see your code, we recognize your code, you have these provisions. We're recommending something completely different. Take a look at it and give it a thumbs up or don't, see if it meets your criteria. And it's gonna do all the things that you want this development for this area to do, and if so, approve it and if not, tell us how we need to change it to make it fit. So it really does give the developer and the planning commission a lot of latitude. Depending on how we script it, but it can give. Developer and planning commission a lot of latitude. On. Preserving natural habitat, preserving wetlands, preserving sensitive areas. Having higher densities in other areas where the development's not gonna have those negative impacts. Looking at transportation patterns, allowing for heavier densities in some areas and less in others. You know, looking at setback provisions and access issues. Looking at open spaces, park spaces, um, there can be a lot of flexibility built in planned unit developments. Which are completely held by state law, our code. Has to be clear and objective, right, we have to have clear and objective standards. If you, if the developer chooses to go through a planned unit development. Criteria. Not the window, that's their choice, right, they have option A, which is clear and objective standards. They wanna do something different, they open themselves up to the subjectivity. And objectivity of the planning commission, the city on what we would like to see and how we'd like to see it, so it opens things up a little bit more. But it means a little bit more work too, right, we're not just looking for cookie cutter stuff, we're gonna look for something maybe a little more creative. But the hope is you get. Biggest, best, intense, um, most. The best use of the land as possible based on the land characteristics that you presented with, as opposed to trying to cookie cutter every individual lie into this overarching criteria, so. I'm pitching the planned unit development pretty hard. Um, our current master plan section of the code is supposed to kinda do that, it's not written very well to be able to do that, it's more of a comprehensive plan view of things like. We'd like to eventually do these things, we'll prove it now. But it doesn't allow the latitude that a planned unit development. Would allow for in our code, so we will be presenting you with some planning. Language to take a look at and. See how flexible, how much latitude we wanna have, so.
Just preliminarily, we will have. Having that code or seeing what you guys are talking about, would that be a. Quasi judicial type application?
Those will be quasi, yeah, those will be type three, yeah, it'd be similar like a subdivision. It wanna go to the city council unless they were looking for a zone change or something. So questions on residential?
Do they still require? That you allow manufactured homes in all the residential zone?
No, our current code. Allows for them in. I think as a conditional use and we haven't gone into conditional use a lot. So, let me reverse. Um, I don't know if the state law requires that, our code allows for it as a conditional use.
It was a state thing. And then the other question. I see this R one down here on the frolic grounds, are we gonna change that to? Or at least part of it?
Yeah, and we, we didn't really make any changes to the residential unless it was commercial or or industrial already, those are the ones that we noted as changing. But we haven't really looked at this with a residential lens yet to say which. Residential areas do we want to rezone? That is one that, yeah, that R one frolic grounds area would be a prime candidate to go public.
And the other one is.
Primary, yeah, and the park on Sixteenth Street and yeah, there's a few little hanging. Through there that we could.
Along those lines, Chris, when we get into the map, would you be able to pull up, um, the city's interactive map so we can? Look at a satellite overlay if we need to and different layers?
Yeah. Might take a quick break before we do that, you might get into that. Any other questions over all of that?
Comments, but not questions at this point.
You know, I think before we get to the map, we should hear comments, you know, cause if. Eventually, you know, it, we're gonna have to be iterative about this, you know, cause well, I I really wanna talk about the map very specifically. So that we can be thinking about that when we're working on the language, but once we work on the language, it might change our thinking about the map. And I don't like the idea of just doing all language before we ever look at the map, so. So we're only, we're only forty-five minutes in, are we okay to keep going for a little bit before the break?
I don't know, you're the, you're the, you're the chairman.
Yeah, but if somebody's. Somebody needs a break, that I'll let them go.
Yeah, and listen to you, Chris, a lot of things that I, that I, that I. Heard, and I, I, and there's some things I find interesting right now. My, uh, my position on an R one, it should be a one unit per lot. Other than. Or ADU, excuse me, so the use of putting a duplex into an R one. If you, if you are, if you're wanting to develop an R one neighborhood, you're trying to create a environment. Where you have a single residence per lot, you're trying to create this. Uh, true suburbia, okay, to lack of better word. Don't let where I came from. Because I don't agree with that. But, um. As interesting is, is that, is that. In our current code, we've got, we've got seven thousand minimum and then we have a hundred and fifty percent as a maximum. You were talking about minimum, but we didn't talk, you didn't talk anything about, about maximum, so my math's slow, that's ten thousand five hundred square feet. I think, I think my math, good. And, um. I, I, as I say, I just, I'm just, I have a strong. Strong opinion about duplexes on an R one. Then jumping to the R three. I'm totally in favor of, of. Taking R one out of that, for the same reason why I was saying that an R one should be an R one. You know, having single family residences in a, in a, in an R three environment. And even I question putting single family residents into an R two environment. Where the, the, the implications of what we're trying to do with an R two is this. And historically, if you go back and look at earlier zoning of different cities. And like, R one, the one meant one. R two, the meant two. R three, it meant multiple. And that's kind of where it came from, where this, where ours here is kind of warped. Morphed into some other things and I'm sure there's reasons for that, but moving forward, I would argue that. R one, if you're gonna put a single family on a lot. You're gonna put it in an R one. Now granted, you talking about taking, taking twelfth street. Which is currently an R three, which has got a lot of R one on it. And making it an R two.
I'd argue it's got a pretty good mix of our, that's single family and. Duplex and triplex on it, pretty good mix, so then you're.
Then, then you're kinda what, but, but what I, what I would, what I would, I would argue is, is that moving forward. In that environment, in that particular location, with an R two saying, okay, you can do a, a, a. Duplex or a triplex there. Single families, let's not. Let's not put them in there. Okay, and these are just my comments, as I, as I say, these are comments, these aren't, these aren't questions, um. I wasn't aware, I mean, you bring to my attention that. If, uh, the Mill Pond is an R three zone. That's been platted with single fa- with lots. Single family residents, correct? That's what existing today. Moving forward, if we were to rezone part of that lot. Or we change our code language. Does, is the developer, is the developer. Have the developer received, go ahead, to go to their next two phases. Based on what's already been put in place, and the reason I'm saying this is. I wouldn't wanna burden that developer and burden the chance that the city's gonna lose that additional, those additional residences. Because all of a sudden, we take that and it's not R three anymore, it's something else. I just wanna, if, if, if they've got, if they've got their approvals in hand and it's just. There's an agreement that the city has made.
They do, they have their land use approval.
No, that's, that's all, that's all said.
When they get ready to go to phase three, all that'll be required is to meet with the city's engineer. And for the engineering to get redesigned and and then submitted and then building permits, so the local works approval for infrastructure. And then building permits for structures, but the land use approvals have already been granted.
I don't think we could rezone Mill Pond at this point, cause it wouldn't meet the requirements of any other zone. Like the plot sizes aren't big enough, you know, setbacks wouldn't be big enough.
Am I mistaken that, that the prior, the. Follow-on phases are in this area?
Correct.
So, so that's shown, that's shown here legally as one lot. Today. So, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't understand your comment.
Existing stuff that they've already built in the R three zone.
The stuff they built, no, I'm talking about the stuff that they, that they've got approval to build. So that'll be replatted at some point. As, when that phase goes ahead and there'll, there'll be legal lots. Put in place based on their approval that they have already received from the city.
And based on my preliminary comments tonight, I would look to rezone that to R two, for example. Lots, they're, they're, you know, or, or maybe R one. If the R one minimum lot size drops down and these, you, there's a little bit of danger in. Making a whole bunch of pre-existing non-conforming in one big giant swish if you don't have to, right, so. Depending on what we decide on, if we decide to look at a lower. Minimum lot size for R one. That some, a lot of that could get rezoned to R one, and if not, it could be the R two.
If they wanna do a row house that's, that's attached, then like you were talking before, we could, we could be creative in an R one environment. That you can do a zero lot line on both sides. And do basically an, an attached home on their own individual lot. Setback zero. One other comment I had. And currently, I, I heard this last, last time we met, current, and I just wanna make a comment on it as well. Duplexes. Aren't. Aren't necessarily. Attached, they can be detached or attached currently in our code. Cause most cities in Oregon, is that the case, or that's, that's an oddity for Philomath?
An oddity for Philomath. An oddity for Philomena. Yep, our, I know that was here when I came, had a pretty blunt opinion, that again, it was, it was about what's the impact of that use on the surrounding neighborhood? There's two dwellings there, and whether you attach them or you detach them and put five feet in between the two, the impact on the neighborhood as far as traffic, the amount of water they're gonna need, the amount of sewer they're gonna need, the transportation needs, it's the exact same. So he never made a big distinction there, our code doesn't make a big distinction there. I've never made a big distinction either, but it is a little bit of an.
We haven't.
We have a few, yeah, we have a few. We have a few that put a breezeway there, because that's what the plan's called for, we, so we have some funky stuff. But most of the time, they're building a duplex and they're gonna be joint at the garage or whatever. I mean, we don't see traditional duplexes in town, so.
Moves economics to sharing the wall. Okay, that's what I have right now.
Okay, Commissioner Green?
Um, I was just curious about the rodeo grounds, were we going to redo them, because they don't have a, like, marketing around them?
Yeah, we just haven't talked about the residential properties yet. So when we do start talking about where do we wanna rezone things, I think this discussion itself about what is R one, what is R two, what does R three look like, and then I think we can look at the map and.
Okay.
I think I would argue that we start at the R three, and let's find where do we want high-density residential to go. And then, okay, where do we want that medium density, where does that work, and then we look at these anomalies, like where does it make sense to rezone low-density residential?
You can go around the room?
Yeah, might as well.
I'll, I'll, I won't skip you, Ruth.
No, I don't have any specific questions at this time, or comments.
Commissioner Rose?
I, I, I'm on her page. Just her, yeah. It's, it's very interesting, and I think we have a lot of good things going on, but it's gonna be fun to see how it plays out.
Um, something I've been thinking about, I think we've done a good job of this so far, but it seems like philosophically, which zones do you want to abut other zones? And keeping heavy industrial away from residential, I think is one of those big philosophies. We definitely have some uh, zones that interact with each other, like, you know, uh, North Twentieth, has some R three right next to what we have zoned as heavy industrial. And I didn't, uh, I don't mean to rub salt in the wound, because I know it's very fresh, but with the mill closing down, um, I don't know if anyone knows if anything is going to happen with that property in the future. Um, but if we are going to put any thought into the surrounding areas, and, I mean, not that we wanna get into a guessing game of what's gonna happen, but I, I just wanna put that out there, I don't know what everybody else's, the commission's thought is on uh, how zones kind of interact with each other, but it seems like if there is this heavy industrial zone on North Twentieth, right next to an R three area, it could be potentially a lot of people impacted by some heavy industrial businesses. You know, could lead to a not great living environment. Um, and that's just one example.
For, for that example, that's where the.
Harvey Park and.
Yeah, Harvey Park and.
Yeah.
It is going, so, I mean, in, in that particular instance, that wouldn't be an issue, in fact, it probably could be rezoned to light industrial.
Yeah, did the, have those plans already been approved?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
It's all under construction.
Oh, it's that, that zone that reaches all the way north?
Yeah, all the way to the river.
But this is light here?
In front, yeah.
But then there's more storage and offices and some other light industrial, and then this is the Harvey Park.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think that's something to consider, I don't know if everyone's on the same page.
I, I've got a number of very specific comments about some of those issues.
Okay.
That we can get to when we're really talking map.
Well, it's your turn.
You're going around, yeah. I think my only.
You're in charge, so.
I'm just getting in, come back. I'm next. My, my only high-level comment is um, to kinda counter you a little bit, Commissioner. I, I think there's value in having an R one, single-family residence with a certain lot size, and having an R two that has a smaller lot size.
Oh, I agree, I heartily agree.
That, that allows single family, you know, so that, so that you could have a, a very different character neighborhood that stills a lot, still allows people to have single-family buildings on a lot, just in a smaller, but you wouldn't want an R one where you had big lot, big lot, tiny little lot, big lot, tiny, you know, so I think there's some value in single family. Hang on, he mentioned. I guess we can skip you, because I'm forty-five minutes. Used it well, too, so.
I have a question, I'm, I'm trying to formulate this question in a way that won't reveal my ignorance, but I, I think I just need to ask it. Is there a Philomena at twenty forty plan, or some statement of goals and aspirations that are gonna inform? Because just off the top of my head, it sounds like we're coming to the, to the map with some assumptions about R three, for example, we want. And how many, you know, how many of these developments that just have one house per larger lot? I mean, is there a sense of, something I should be looking at to kind of inform the decisions that we make going forward?
There is, John, yeah, it's a good question, so when, when we started the commercial and the industrial, the first thing we did was move to the comprehensive plan, and we looked at the new policies that the city's approved. That went through the planning commission, the recommendations, went to the city council, and so we've, we've just recently updated, um, based on the housing needs analysis that was done by a private consultant, and then they worked with the city and, and came up with recommendations, and we've adopted new policies specific to residential. Um, I didn't think we were gonna get into detail, like, looking specific lot by lot, but before we start that residential discussion, we'll bring those to this group and we'll walk through one of the city's priorities. Because there's very specific information about targeting low-income housing, affordable housing, um, housing of all types for all um, households, and connectivity between residential and commercial sites, and there's several, I think there's ten or fifteen policies. Recently updated. Um, so yes, we need to go through those in depth and make sure that any changes that we're doing are gonna be in line with those um, policies from the comprehensive plan. So.
Thanks.
And that's available on the website, you can Google search comprehensive plan, it's the twenty forty comp plan.
We've got a new copy for the planning commission, I can't remember, in our book.
In the.
In the notebook.
Is that the, we grabbed the new one?
But it's available, like, website version, because I can do keyword searches and bring stuff up, I can pull up housing, I think it's chapter three is housing, maybe chapter four is housing.
Even the, the studies that were done? He's had a copy of some of that, that might be useful.
Some of these stuff's gonna be in the appendix, but the chapter itself's got quite a bit of background material. And then the policy, if you skip to the end of the chapter, and bold numbered, it'll have the policies by number. And there, you know, it's only a page or two of that, you've gotta go through that first, then you can go back and find that material somewhere. But it was all based on surveys that were conducted, the, the land use study on how many acres of high-density do you have, what's your population forecast? Based on what you have now, what are those projections gonna need, some, you know, heavy industrial or high multifamily housing are you going to need in the future, so all those calculations are done, all the recommendations. And we will wanna, again, we'll wanna make sure any recommended policies we're doing are, are recommended zone changes are gonna be reflected on those new. Good question. I'll tell you.
I, I, my more, my comment is a more of a comment on this R two. I, all the different things that you were describing of potential things that could be in there. Most of our R two is developed with single-family houses, not all of it, but a good share of it. In terms of redevelopment, how is, is that real- realistically even possible to do? I mean, are they, would, would they have to go in and tear down the house and put up a whatever? Or two or three lots and put it up as something or another? I mean, there are some apartments here and there, you know, six or eight units.
But are the lots are big enough for a fourplex or something, if the house gets too old to?
Yeah, just take it down, and I guess they've done that in Corvallis, near uh, north of the university quite a bit, now that you say that.
We've sweetened some of that now, but we've not seen a lot of, because the zoning's commercial right now. So right now, you've got a pre-existing non-conforming residential use in a commercial zone. So if you tear down that building, you can build what's there, but you can't add an extra unit. You can only replace what's there, which is a single-family residential. Or if you don't rebuild it within six months, it's now commercial and you have to build a commercial use there. So we've not really allowed that to really take place, so it's hard to.
Yeah, well, and you're talking about college there.
Mostly college, yeah.
And I, I, when I was thinking about that, I was looking down here, uh, between.
Seventeenth and Eighteenth, and Sixteenth.
And Nineteenth, yeah.
Yeah, and there, there aren't a lot of large lots there, there are some, but we are seeing, um, I mean, that's been residential for a long time, so a lot of those are existing, just small lots with homes. There's several manufactured homes that have been installed there. Um, so you know, there's quite a bit, there's quite a bit of diversity, but there's duplexes, there's some triplexes in there. So that's a pretty good mix, but that's a pretty dense area, I mean, you drive down Seventeenth and Eighteenth.
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was meaning, like, that's kind of the biggest R two we have. And I just, I don't see how it would redevelop.
I don't know that it would as much there, but I think we would see the redevelopment along College Street.
Right, and, and up Twelfth if we did that.
Yeah, and up Twelfth Street, but yeah, you've got, you know, south of Pioneer on the west end, Seventh, Eighth Street. So there, there's some larger lots in there, but for the most part, a lot of that's built out already, so I would anticipate a lot of changes there. You've got up north, the far north end of Twelfth Street, that's zoned R two. Um, you've got a developer that's actively looking to try to develop that site, that's, you know, hitting minimum lot size. Obstacles right now, where they would love to be able to get some smaller lots in there right now, but they're minimum six thousand square foot lots, and there, there, yeah, some obstacles there, that could be relieved if we allowed for some more flexibility, different options.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. So, I know you said you didn't wanna get too far into the details.
Well, I just wanna take our eye off of the comp plan, and I didn't include those, so, but we can definitely talk through if you've got specific things that maybe we can bring back or bring information back at the next meeting as we get into it more. I think that'd be great.
I think it would be good after the break to go around the table again and let people say specific thoughts on the map. I mean, I've got a few little things about commercial residential, I've got a few little things about light industrial versus R three, and I'm sure that others do too, and I think it'd be good just to start the conversation without, without attempting to reach consensus, because that would take more time.
Yeah, no, without any type of rebuttal from me on any part either, I'll, I'll just take the input and, and put it out there. Don't like I'm having to defend anything.
All right, so that sounds good. So, let's adjourn for five minutes.
All right.
For our comp plan, so but just hearing that, I don't know where that would be, so I'll have to think about that. By now by the. Three out here between at the end of the couplet. And maybe I walked into there, there was some discussion about the tree and the trees. That is would be, that's also part of the C three, right?
Yeah.
Everything from Dollar General to the.
Okay.
Into the couplet.
And so it would still be there. Okay. That's all I have. Well, oh, or my maybe it's more of a question. Like like clear out here, this R two way out here on to the east. That's where the apartment complex is, but now now they own ten houses. Is that actually R two? Or or is it really R three?
It's not currently R two. I don't remember what the current zoning is.
Oh, oh, this is all we've changed this some already.
I think it was light and.
Everything in like a dark outline. Closing the chain. No, it's confusing to keep them all separate sometimes. So, yeah, would it be possible?
Probably just.
While we talk about it, Chris? Because that way we can show what it's currently zoned and then switch to what our proposed zone change is and do all these overlays.
But you know, you're that link. Is it going to be in my email somewhere?
Yeah. He was like late last year though. I looked it up the other day.
Find that that county one, but our link to our.
I've never been able to find it through the city.
Well, we keep it hidden.
Don't want everybody playing with it.
I just sent it back to you, Chris. It should be at the top of your box.
Now, I guess one thing that you hadn't talked about is. You're talking about what's. In this within the city as it exists right now, but there are areas outside the city that. You know, potentially if they was to sell or develop or wanted to develop that. You know, like down here where the legend is at. I mean, many years ago, there was interest of doing an R one zone and putting six hundred houses in there. Which I kind of think that type of. R one zoning would fit for that, but. How do you, how do we? I I guess we can't really think about what's could happen outside of the city. Until somebody proposes something.
Yeah, because that's county. They've tried to annex that a couple of times.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we can definitely look at.
Well, I mean, because they.
Boundary and futures. We could look at. Comp plan zoning for their growth boundary. Your development. So when a property is annexed into the city, we can amend our comprehensive map.
Right.
That includes the entire urban growth boundary, not just inside city limits. And you can say upon annexation, this is the zoning that we want to come into the city.
And and why I was wondering about that and that might seem something to think about about is. Just like what I was describing about that R two stuff. Where a lot of this is already developed other than the industrial. You know, I don't see how some of this redevelopment is going to happen or if it will at all. But so I'm looking at it like, well, what's outside of the city right now? That could fit with our planning, I guess you could say, and.
But it's not in the city limit.
Well, it well, it's 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 sort of zoned, sort of. What what would you call it?
Comp comp plan.
In the comp plan, it's sort of zoned. I don't know. That that I it's more of a question than.
A follow-up, do you think if we change those potential zones, would that help or hurt the city in terms of annexation?
Typically, the higher the density, the greater the value. So if you're talking about re-zoning within the urban growth boundary to higher density, that would. I would say that would encourage development more than it would deter development, but.
And 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 I'll I'll say. This is the comprehensive plan. The the thought I had about that, that section there where it says legend proposed zoning is. And I mentioned that there was interest of just that whole section all the way down to chapel to do R one. Well, if we need some R three, if say.
Yeah.
If you went straight across from the park, that, you know, took a straight line across that. Uh, through the R two where it says R two and oh, that would be zoned R three. And then you could put a couple of apartments and you'd be right on twenty sixth. One day supposed to have a stoplight, you know, and things like that that. But we can't do it because it's not in the city, at least in terms of what we're doing now.
Stoplight on twenty sixth?
At main. There's the highway.
Yeah. Oh, if someday. If if more is developed north of the.
She put seven hundred. I guess. Stoplights all over the place. Or I mean, I have real issue. They give pedestrians a chance to cross a major highway in our urban area. It sure is.
I'd love to explain.
Anything else, Ken? Are you recording all your login information?
I am. I live in Fishpool.
Yeah. He didn't show his password though, so that was good.
You can't see how many uh emails I have not written in my Gmail account.
Two more zeros.
I'll go back up to the link. It's in the body.
You like my wife?
It's so, it gives me such anxiety.
I delete that. I delete them every day.
Show me this again.
Isn't any of the R one we currently have not developed? It's all developed, right?
No, no.
There's a lot in the very northwest corner. They're above Starlight.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, if you have a whole bunch of money to buy the land.
It's always the case.
And then then the one that I was talking about, that little whatever that would be by where the fairgrounds is.
Right.
North and south of it. But not much, you're right.
So pretty much just that top corner unless we add something in or re. Well, even if we rezone, it doesn't mean that it's a blanket lot. It just means we're zoning it.
Well, there's. There's a lot of lots that are. Uh, adjoining other lots that are kind of just like a big field or yard.
There there are a lot of lots that can be split.
Yeah. But it would have to come before us. And so if were to me, that's, Dan, you said that there wouldn't be much redevelopment by. But I agree, there's in the R two or R three, there there aren't a lot of big spaces where somebody could come in and do a whole bunch of stuff. But there's a lot of spaces where people could do little things. So if you look down at the Mill Pond Crossing. That little where it says R three right next to nineteenth. That has been approved for like twenty units. So in that one little tiny place, there's twenty units and there's some lots up there on North Twelfth that are that size. So what we're doing. What level of redevelopment happens in some of those lots that might have a single manufactured house now? We could take that out.
True.
Within thirty units and, you know.
Well, that when we were talking about it before, when I. I said made me think of north of the university.
Yep.
There used to be a house and now there's a fourplex or whatever.
A lot of that is actually owned by the university.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of what I've seen in the last two, three, four years. But they still have, they still have some very old properties as well that they own.
And Charles. Yeah, what do you want to say?
Um, just just that one. Let's start off with that piece of property we were talking about. Um, that is those apartment buildings on Main Street that is proposed to be R two. And what is it currently?
R three currently. Oh, layers and. So here's city zoning. We have to propose zoning.
You didn't turn proposed off. Oh, it's R one? Yeah, that's that's not right there. So it's proposed to be R two, right? And so the question is whether we want it to be R two or R three, right? Would they be a lot? So and and whether the existing use would be conforming or not. Depends on how we write, probably pretty specifically how we write the rules for R two versus R three.
Well, I think that was um. It's not built to current R one standards.
Right.
Depending on how we how broadly we define R two, we would, and depending on how broadly we define R three, if it's. It has multifamily, then it doesn't.
Right.
The R two would seem to make sense.
Even even though that there's, I mean. Most fourplexes, aren't they? I I think and. Maybe they're separated, but that be what should happen in an R two. Oh, I don't know. I mean, I think what Gary said as far as whatever it is. I wouldn't want to make it them make them non-conforming along this.
Right. So the next comment is if you go down to where Newton Creek crosses Main Street. And there was that property that kind of looked at being redeveloped. Yeah, that whole thing right there. So you've got the office residential on. It's green.
Yeah.
And then and then the R one beside that and then the R one across. So that that whole region of R one. Seems to me that it could become an R two zone.
Yeah, so right now it's office residential.
And then there's that property right along the creek that somebody looked at developing into like six or seven houses. But the design didn't meet our standards and then they didn't proceed forward. So there's like a big lot there with one house on it, right on Main Street. So, yeah. And and a lot of those lots are fairly large and interestingly shaped, so. It seems to me that's another potential area all the way between the red R three and the blue O R and Green Street.
Yeah, this is, let me, sorry, let me share my screen with people that are watching from home because all they're looking at is us right now.
Well, I saw Squinting.
They were looking at the screen, but they're not. So let me.
Yeah.
Have to get it up there first.
Well, there where that one, that O R, I mean, those are houses.
They're single family.
Yeah, along here. This is single family residential here. So we were talking about bringing that to star one.
Which is which is fine.
But then you're talking about this.
I'm talking about that whole area there. And even even across the street too. I mean, we can go all the way from Newton Creek to that red R three. And that whole zone there could be R two rather than R one, and we would be encouraging future density. Right there between the highway and the schools. So that to me is a potential place to.
The R three as R three, the little.
Uh, because it is currently apartment building.
Okay.
Well. There's some R one.
That's where the arc is.
No. Arc's on the north side of Maine.
Oh.
Yeah, that.
R three, that red R three right there is is an apartment complex. No, some of it is. I think there's a house next to that's in that R three zone. Can you turn on the satellite?
Yeah, you're right.
Can you turn on this? That's why I wanted this thing up, yeah.
I think we could all get on a bus and drive around.
That's a summer project. It's like walk along with my dog. I did that about a year and a half ago when we first started this process. That's why I mentioned to get to the map. Here we are. And we're like, wait a minute.
That I'd say half of that is where the Jared Deli or Geraldine Apartments are. But then there's a big.
Turn on the aerial? No, well, yeah, because it's hiding underneath the closed captions. You don't have so many things on the screen at a time.
Yeah. I don't need to see those. Are we doing those for other people's better?
They'll still be on there. I think I've had them from the screen still, so we just won't show them on the screen. There's area right there, see? All right, and then lots. If you still.
Oh, you'd still have the zoning. I just see what's underneath of it. Oh, wow.
We've got.
So, yeah, there is.
That's like a house.
See, it kind of serves like their backyard. I don't know.
I guess I did realize it was a different lot.
So anyhow, that's. But I think that's a duplex.
I think it's a duplex, yeah.
It's not part of the apartments. I don't know if, I mean, it could probably stay R three, maybe go R two. I I like, you know, it's for future development purposes, there's some some place. We don't desire to leave all zoning what it is today. And it's good to make blocks out of the zoning rather than have little cutouts. Little things, so. But also balance that with listing non-conforming that we're going to create. So, anyway, you got that, Chris, as a comment?
I do.
But Gary, just to clarify, you were only talking about. The the properties along Main Street, not down on. Applegate.
No, between Applegate and Maine.
No, between Applegate and Maine, from that red R three to Newton Creek, I would make that whole region, um, R two. Do a lot of density, because some of those lots are big enough to do something a little different with. And if the house went away and they wanted to do something, and then in particular that big lot, and just the, the location that it is.
So from Newton Creek east or west?
Yeah, from Newton West to.
Twenty first, twenty third.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Actually.
Oh, oh, yeah, with what's there now?
From nineteenth to Newton Creek.
No, that's twentieth, nineteenth is.
This is twentieth. There's nineteenth. So this would say R three, but it.
No, that's, that's not nineteen.
This is nineteen.
Yep.
You're right, twentieth, twenty first. So twentieth, which is what I wrote the first time, east of twentieth, south of Main Street.
Yes. So if they are two.
I think.
That's just an idea.
In the middle of that, I think there is actually a couple of commercial plots, businesses. Yeah, I mean, at least Google thinks so.
Uh, if they are, they're in houses.
Yeah, people can have businesses in their home.
Yeah.
And they could.
Those are all, those are all residences.
So those are all driveways that empty into Main Street?
Yes.
The, you have, do have the motel there.
Yeah, the motel is in that zone.
And then, yeah, so that would be the only conver-.
No, it's, it's in the C two. Oh, yeah.
Oh, there's, oh, there's where that. So that's in the right place.
All right. My next comment is if you go to north, up into, uh, twentieth place. So twentieth place right now has, um, has the heavy industrial on one side and the light industrial on the other side, that north end. And then we're going, going, we're proposing to go to R three on both sides. But except for the, the little triangle that is one residence in the old Alarica building. And I would propose making all of that R three, because I, I think about the development of a street. And if, and if you have a bunch of residential on a street, putting just one light industrial, um, one or two light industrial driveways on that same street. It just kind of mixes the uses and, um, one residence is now a house. The, the one lot is now a house and then the other is the existing Alarica building, which is developed, but it's not much of a building.
No.
And so if, if somebody was gonna come in and build more apartment buildings and those sorts of things, makes sense to me that everything on twentieth place would be R three.
Yeah, that makes sense. I agree.
My next comment. Oh, in the corner of, um, at the intersection of College and nineteenth, there's C two on the north side, on both sides of the street. And I don't really agree with that because of the lot sizes and the current uses and, um, the existing uses. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me that those two would be commercial. I understand the thought behind it. Full disclosure, my son owns the one on the left. He wants to keep using as a residence and he'd like to do an A D U and right now he's.
Oh.
If, if we changed it, he wouldn't be able to, right? So. Um, and, and I think the, the one on the right, the, that one, I think the city should buy that. And make it into a micro park and put a sidewalk so that the sidewalk can actually connect through instead of routing people through the parking lot of an apartment building. That's what I think should happen. But no, I don't have the money to, no, to the city to buy that room.
Yet.
That makes.
Yet.
Yet.
It makes, it makes no sense that those people lots on either side of C are, are commercial. Because everything around them is residential.
We, we were trying to go to intersections and kind of make.
Yeah, but it's.
Further out, but. It's true of that one.
Well, and that's, that's part of the problem I have with our twenty five acres in the middle of the city.
Yeah.
Is that, why, why would we do that here when we're not really doing it there?
Yeah.
So I, I would concur that that needs to be R sort of.
Well, I would, the one on the, where by the R three, just change it to, what you could do with it at, at the R three, but. And, and then take the C two off and leave that R two. And I would even say the C two below that. Uh, on the south side of college, on the left anyway, oh, it's already commercial.
Yeah, that's not mine, commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just renovated that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And.
That's, you know, so that's fine.
I'm okay with the other. And then my, um.
So Gary, what's your proposal for those two zones that are on the north side of college?
Uh, the one on the left, it's next to a whole bunch of R two that we've proposed to be R two and I would just make it R two. The one on the right, I would just make it R three. So it could become part of that apartment complex or they could put a sidewalk, you know, I don't know.
What about?
But if we take out single families out of R three, then right now it's pretty, they're pretty small lots.
Yeah, and.
I don't know, we're arguing to make it R two.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I, I, because that'll give us, if we, if we leave a single family in R two.
Yeah.
And that would give a little more flexibility there.
The developer that needs that apartment complex is done. They're not gonna buy the corner lot.
No.
Someone else might though.
Is that one of those?
They.
Corner lot. I don't know if it still is.
They built their parking and everything around, I think with the intent that at some point that could happen, but.
Yeah.
There's still value in those existing homes.
Yeah.
So it's, it's the biggest problem right now.
I know, but finally sold, but it's been for forever long.
And it, it looks like it's two lots.
It's two.
Don't worry about traffic on that corner.
Other stoplight.
I mean, that.
That would make it worse.
Maybe a roundabout.
So, yeah, so, you know, honestly, what do we do? Safety on nineteenth street, because it goes to.
Article today about.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I concur on R two for both of those lots.
They're selling that shit.
Yeah, we're safer.
My last.
People know how to use them.
My last, I don't know, there's, there's a couple churches that are, um, we're proposing to be R two. And does it, would it matter to those? Especially the community church, the white ones with steeple, you know, there's not a residence on there now. And if something happened in the church, it would make sense to me that it would become part of the downtown core with the ping on fourteenth. And then, I don't know, I could see it either way. It was just a question in my mind that the existing uses. And then the Methodist church, there's a residence and a church on it that has a preschool in it and all that kind of stuff. So zoning it as R two is again, non-conforming, I think?
Churches are conditional use approval in the R one or R two.
Okay.
Well, it would be, they would be allowed still, it's just a conditional use approval that they already have.
Okay. So maybe R two is the right. I don't think the R two would hurt them at all. For my comments.
Okay, um, so if you want to go back to twentieth, we got that industrial area again.
The north of highway?
Yep. Oh, can you turn on our current proposed changes? Yeah. So I don't, I don't know what the city has approved for the heavy industrial zone, the dark purple. But if the comments earlier are correct, then it seems like light industrial would be more suitable.
Is that the, other part, RV part?
Yeah, RV park.
Story.
Yeah, story.
And, and a light industrial park in the middle with some business spaces.
Yeah.
Oh.
So the very, the very north end of that, I keep hearing RV park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's literally going to be a short-term RV park. Is that what it is?
Yes, but seventy.
Meaning, meaning it's meant for overnight or weeks, not for two years.
But seventy percent or more of the spaces will be pretty much permanent.
Okay.
Parties.
Really?
There's some state laws that protect RV parks and don't allow cities to.
Okay.
Them out of state.
So why, why is, yeah, why is it heavy industrial? I don't see any of the, of the use that's gonna go in there that it's been approved for.
Though the, currently the city's code restricts RV parks to heavy industrial zones. Because we did not want them impacting residential zones or commercial zones. So they stuck them in heavy industrial zones with that conditional use.
So maybe the northern region stays heavy industrial and then the middle region goes light industrial? I, I do, again, I don't know what the city has approved, right?
Well, I, I think it's thing is, I think it's moot, because the whole thing's been approved and the whole thing is getting developed and.
And, and the, and the other thing to know that R three that we're proposing is. Almost entirely wetlands with Newton Creek going through it. So that's more than likely going to remain a natural buffer between anything anybody would develop right on the street.
Okay.
And then all the way back, but, you know.
Yeah.
There's ways around that, but.
It's actually the, the creek, um, essentially that, the creek is. The difference between high industrial and the R three is the creek.
Yeah.
Yes, right?
It's the boundary. It's the boundary. And then R three is all marshy, but they could, they could develop.
So I'm mostly, you know, heavy industrial is where we allow the noisiest, smelliest, most obnoxious businesses to go about their business. And we're putting it right next to a high-density, uh, living space. So that's my concern. Um, I don't, I don't know if, uh. I mean, because if we zone it high, high, heavy industrial now, yes, there's gonna be a temporary, not so temporary RV park maybe going in there. But that could change in the future, you know, there could be a smelting plant going in there in the future. So.
Well, there's still conditional use for a lot of it.
Um, okay, so that's.
But anyhow, the, the southern piece could certainly be light industrial.
Yeah, depending on what the plans are, uh, that a city's approved, which I don't know.
It's a storage unit and, uh, light industrial office and, um, shop.
Okay. Let's go down to twentieth and Applegate. Uh, yeah, we were talking about that R one area that abouts the R three area. Yeah, can you zoom in on like the, the? We kind of can't see it.
Current use.
The picture.
Yeah, just turn it on.
Ah, there you go. Yeah, so did Gary, did we end up on that whole region? Was your suggestion to make it all R three or?
R two.
All R two? That whole, that half?
That, that's to the east.
Yeah.
Or the R three, you want to go to R two also?
No.
Okay. Well, then I would agree with that. Okay.
Is there anyone on that R three?
I wasn't proposing to change the R three. The R three would stay R three, but the R one between twentieth and twenty first, R two. But you're also suggesting all the way.
All the way to the creek.
So I would agree with at least that, that half of the block, the east half between twentieth and twenty first.
Yeah.
The R two.
It's already not a classic R one.
Yep.
Residential neighborhood.
Yeah.
With the way it's stacked.
Agreed. Um, okay, we kind of already talked about that one. So if we can go further south than nineteenth. Kind of mentioned it before, but, um, yeah, right where your cursor was, yeah, right below there, zoom in on that. So that building is P Y A C and the rest of the area is Clemens Primary. So, um, and then, yeah, that little playground area all the way to the street. I don't think the plots really match up on the map with what's actually going on there. You have that road that goes in between the highway and it's like a fire, fire lane.
Yeah, between the high school and the middle school.
So I, I don't, I don't think that'd be public, because it's actually school and I don't know if P Y A C. What is, what's that actually zoned right now?
It's on R one.
Is R one now?
Yeah. Because it, it was part of this.
Yeah, so that would be existing non-conforming if we left it that way. I don't know if that would be commercial. Would be the correct zone for them. But, yeah, that area doesn't, doesn't look right, current zoning. There is a house on the north side with that used to, that was a bakery at one time, like a year or two ago.
Why, why isn't, why isn't the school public?
The zoning got banned before the school put there.
The zoning got.
The zoning was established before the school was placed there.
Okay, but like we're gonna take over it.
Yep.
I would just make that public.
Yeah.
And, and P Y A C is, is it a private?
I think it's an LLC, probably, a private.
Yeah, okay, we need to stay, we need to pick something else.
Yeah, but probably not R one. It's not, that's not even a house that they converted, you know, it's a.
Yeah, and I believe they bought that next lot north, or they bought that house just north.
Did they?
Yeah.
Maybe both those plots need to be C one?
Well, we want to be a little careful of spot zoning, you know, it's, it's zoning, it's not lot by lot, it's area by area. So, you know, when you're looking at footprint and what you're doing, um, you know, we had a existing, pre-existing non-conforming business use. They've maintained that business use, um, with the clubhouse, the bakery to the north, same thing. It was a pre-existing non-conforming. So, um, we want to be a little careful that we're not going lot by lot for the zoning based on the current use and really look at more regional planning. And that gets difficult to do in this situation. Um, but I, I will stray away from just letting individual lots for some people based on the current use.
Yeah, so my comment would be to take a look at those. Clemens probably could go public, I guess.
Yeah, they may.
They don't have like a school.
Public her and Clemens. But the other two that are there, again, with P Y C, I mean, uh, I have to look on the list again on the R one and the R two. But, um, you know, clubhouses, daycare, after-school programs, I could see all of those being allowed in an R two as a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Um, they're supporting that, so then you've got R two.
R two.
It's being, continuing the R two sound a lot.
Yeah. Um. Just a small comment, not to run us down a rabbit trail, but, um, South Eighteenth, we've got this like hole or city limits. So we have not Palomath City within Palomath City.
There's three, four of them up here.
Yeah.
Yeah, today was. The code refers to those as islands. Um, there's a provision in the code that allows the city council, the annex island properties that are county property completely surrounded by the city. Um, I'll process that by saying anytime a property wants to annex and it's gonna create an island, the city. Code requires that we notify that property, say, hey, there's a land use application out for annexation. If they're annexed, it's gonna create an island. As an island, there's specific code language that allows the city council authority to annex you into the city. Without going through what you petition the city for an application, right? The city council can take the initiative to do those. We did that about eight years ago. I think we annexed. A dozen or so properties in, some of them are grouped, but about a dozen, but we left out two or three. And then some are newly created. This was created when. And then some are newly created, this was created when part of Mill Pond, um, was annexed, the part below this, it's used to be the continuation of Eighteenth Street, using it in future public right of way. And that got annexed in when Mill Pond Crossing got their approvals, so it didn't leave this a lot, I kinda created this island here.
Does that mean the city does not serve them water and sewer?
It means that we've got either a special agreement with them, because it was already there, or it means that, yeah, they're on a well and septic, sometimes we've extended water sewer previously. The current code says that the city can't provide water sewer service to properties outside of city limits without going to. Well, it's a pretty high hurdle to get through.
Yeah, we invested that street for fluoride about fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
And people, those houses and farming. We don't ever dog in this fight.
Ah, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's probably very informative, thank you, Chris.
I did.
Um, I, I think that's all I really wanted. Um, okay, if we can fly over to, uh, Thirteenth and Cedar area.
And shop.
I tried to look through my notes, yeah, that R two on the left of Thirteenth. Yeah, I tried to look through old meeting notes, cause we have, we approved that zone change, but then it, yeah, okay, so I just wanna make sure like we did update that to what we concluded in that meeting, that was to rezone that lot. I don't remember rezoning at R two though, but I remember creating a flag lot. So the flag lot in the back is R one, but the one facing the street is R two?
Oh. Yeah, but it's the same owner, the church owns, they have multiple pack slots, but it's the same owner.
Yeah.
So the zoning was, the only part that got rezoned was this.
Yes, my only comment is just, you know, check the meeting notes to make sure we, that got zoned correctly, cause I had, I thought we had zoned it R one, but there was some, some special exemption that we granted them.
Yeah, and I, well, yeah, I don't think this is right, cause the house and the barn were kept together on one property.
Yeah.
And it was made smaller like in here, so I just don't think this has been updated yet.
Yeah, so I think that's one of these, update the map, maybe check it against, uh, past meeting notes. And then, um, yeah, the frolic grounds. Discussion about changing that to public. I don't know what the extent of that would be, what all the city owns and they don't. There's that little, that little, uh, area facing.
The city owns these two lots, so, well, I'd rather zoning, hold on, I gotta turn the zoning off or it just thinks I want to know about zoning. The city owns, what's on here? So the city owns this lot and then this five acre piece here. This is privately owned, that's a in the county still or in the urban growth boundary, but this is outside city limits. This is inside city limits, this is inside city limits.
What is, what is that last piece? Is that still some of the open pass area that's used?
It's used during the rodeo, but it's still owned by this property owner that lives in this new house here.
Okay.
There used to be a house out front that flooded every year.
Right.
Be rebuilt back here and tore down the house out front, but she owns three acres of what gets used for the frolic. Um, the frolic has a lease agreement with her to utilize that during the road. And she has, currently has no interest in annexing into the city and paying city property taxes. Lot to public.
Yep. With, with the private businesses.
Oh, yeah, we'd need to zone that something.
Yeah.
Besides R one.
Well, this is vacant right now.
Oh, there's nothing in it?
So we slogging was, it's a two acre parcel that they leased to we slogging and they've, uh, gone out of business and it's up for sale. Uh, industrial use is a, the mechanic shop for a logging company. Current zoning is R one. Pre-existing nonconforming. Uh, the property up here is owned by the church that we just talked about. And they own this lot and this lot and this lot.
Mm-hmm.
And this lot. Yeah. Um, the R one is fine there still, I mean, the church would have to come in for conditional use.
Yep.
Whether it was R one or R two, so I don't know that there's a need to rezone that. We did have an apartment complex at one point was interested in that lot and maybe trying to upzone it and they kinda went away. Secrets here, the church has said publicly, they're mostly interested in putting their church building and parking lot up here.
Yep.
It's the highest out of the floodplain area, they take their access here off of thirteen.
Sure, they said that in their, in the meeting.
Yeah, I'm just repeating what they've said publicly. Um, which leaves quite a bit of room, um, for parking for events like the frolic. Um, but also creates a little area there, I mean, if it was to go a medium density or even a high density, it's close to Applegate's, near the downtown, walkable schools, it checks a lot of boxes for higher density if we wanted to look at higher density there.
We could turn it back into an airport.
That's another option.
That, that, the road going down there, that's the runway.
Yeah, this is Skirvin airstrip. I'm against that, man.
You can try.
Start, you can, you can build a big door on the side, really nice, stored airplanes.
Yeah, always good with hot air balloons. That's works, that could be fun.
A much smaller storage area.
Uh, that's pretty much all my comments.
Okay. Commissioner Rose?
I'm still absorbing.
Okay.
Um, I do have a comment, uh, which is not, it's similarly related to the map. Um, I wonder if, or upcoming years, if we could get further clarification as to what we're gonna be focusing on. Because I can enjoyed reading all this, particularly this nice pond, which is so, so, um, readily absorbed by seniors.
I was gonna make a comment on that myself.
Yes, ditto. Um, it really would have been more beneficial just to be driving around, you know, looking at the map.
Well, I thought you were.
Spreading my eyes.
I was gonna say, I, I assume you was talking about the pond side.
I was.
I'd also suggest is, I feel like we ought to get that it's a draft. The watermark, I mean, hard enough to read, I don't think we need to watermark it.
Yeah.
I mean, my point is, I'm not sure where we're going and, and how we're gonna get there, I mean, all these comments are incredibly but what's next and what was next? So, I mean, I envision getting to the end of the year and just maybe one of this stuff or this next.
I don't envision that at all.
I don't like that idea.
I, I, I envisioned getting done and that's, that's why I pushed for this map discussion, cause it's, it's making some progress and I, I wanna, I wanna jumpstart your speed.
Okay.
And that's why I'm glad we have two meetings.
Yes, but I just wanna understand where all the code language fits in.
That's next on the agenda. I think that's probably all we're, I mean, due to, but we'll ask him later.
Is it possible to get a new copy of this?
I plan on asking him that later. Cause I declined to read it for that reason.
Wait, I'm good.
You didn't read it?
I didn't read it, it was too small and I wanted to talk about the map, so. It fit.
You were not inside there.
Just taking this, Commissioner Green there.
I'm, I'm good right now, I think.
It is not my doing, it is what comments tracking does. It's what the software does.
Didn't track any comments. You, you can, you can deal with that.
Yeah, there's a little ground.
Yeah. So Commissioner Malone?
I, 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 I have no additional comments on the map.
The map goes to bring that discussion to pause for tonight. Um, at a future meeting, maybe the next meeting, we can bring back some residential information from the comp plan, uh, relevant sections there. Um, I do think we'll look holistically at commercial, industrial, residential, as opposed to continue to just do commercial industrial only because there's so much inner mix, which is fine, we've already talked through that. So I do think it's, we're probably at a healthy spot to continue to work on the specifics in the commercial development code, which we'll talk to in a moment. But to start, uh, um, getting more familiar with the residential policies that are in the comp plan and to start looking and look, trying to distinguish R one from R two from R three. And having those discussions and we can do that as early as your next meeting. Um, and then start taking the input we've got from today, we could bring a proposed map as early as your next meeting or a future meeting. And staff can make some recommendations on where we foresee R one, R two, R three based on, um, comprehensive plan and kind of our vision for things. And then we've got something to work from and discuss and say you like or don't like, um, zoning side of things, we didn't talk much tonight about the climate friendly area, I kinda wanna put a pin there as much as Chair Connor may wanna go there, but I do think that we need to better define R one, R two, R three, have better understand that, and then we can start talking about where the climate friendly area needs to and needs not to be. And by that time, there might be some legal challenges to the climate friendly areas that we can talk about and we may not be talking about climate friendly areas anymore, so. Um, yes, we'll see.
Uh, I did wanna make note of the comment, it's.
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna tell them.
Yeah, no, tell, I'm, yeah, tell away, we just haven't gotten to that point where I'm gonna stress everybody else.
Cause Commissioner Green made a very important point, um, about the routes through the city.
Well, yeah, just safety, so being, I mean, you know, you have kids or whatever, I just, I've, I grew up in an area where there were some pockets to where they developed certain areas and they moved in a lot of people, but they hadn't, eh, they hadn't added a new hospitals or fire departments or anything else, and there were kids that started not being able to get to the hospital because they couldn't get to them in time because there was traffic. So my only, like, big concern as we start looking at all of this is if we block up nineteenth, you know, and we have chapel to go through, well, if that has construction, we don't have a lot of pass-through roads. If something happens and there's construction on the highway and nineteenth is backed up with buses and parents are using thirteenth to get around, you know, how, I just feel like it needs to be maybe at the forefront of some people's minds is do we punch a street through or do we just let everything get overpopulated and we wait for something to happen? And I just don't want something to happen, so just to think about it, not to be morbid, but, you know, you have to be able to get out in certain situations and if you can't, but as a helicopter come, do they have a place to land, you know, there's other things. Do we build a fire station, there's, you know, just things that you discuss as this stuff comes through, and that was my biggest concern when we were looking at putting in like six hundred units over in that one pocket of land was how many punch-through streets are we gonna have so that we can avoid this from happening? That's it, yeah.
Yes, Nick.
Well, I just speak to that, eh, the process wise, just to kinda grow that discussion a little bit is the zoning map has a lot of implications that we need to think through when we're talking about zoning. The zoning map is what you start with and again, we start looking at our utility maps, when you start looking about where the future water line's gonna go and sewer lines and how bigger they need to be. That's all based on what are the future demands for those areas. So, you know, all of these discussions are talking about changing, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking through on a utility standpoint, I know we've got a major pump station down here on, you know, South Ninth Street, I know we've got another one down on Chapel Drive. You know, based on how things change and population forecasts change in different areas, that's gonna have an impact on our sewer pump stations. It's gonna have an impact on our water distribution system, it's gonna have an impact on our transportation system plan, so our current zoning was used to develop our current transportation system plan, which was done in two thousand and eighteen. If the zoning is going to change, then we're going to need to change, update our transportation system plan. And that's going to have to account for, okay, if you're gonna have these huge population centers here, where are the cut-through roads, where are the future intersections, where's the future lights, all of that comes into play, and so the zoning map isn't like, oh, we're done, this is like, okay, if this is where the zoning is going to be for the next twenty years, um, with little caveats and pockets that when you review those zone changes, you're looking at, is it gonna change the impact of these utilities and services and transportation? And if you answer no to that, then a lot of times we can okay a small zone change here or there. But big picture, this is what we're gonna start with when we go to update all of those other system plans, water, sewer, street, arcs, et cetera, it's gonna be based on these projected population growth areas or lack thereof, so um, you make a very, very good point. I guess I would just say the current TSP does account for a lot of residential growth down in the southeast corner, right? So it calls for Twenty Sixth Street to punch through and I, uh, uh, I believe it still calls for light at the intersection. You know, so there are things in the transportation system plan that if a future development were to come in, say, we're gonna develop here, we're gonna point to our system plan, we're gonna say, that's terrific, our transportation system plan says upon development, these are the things that are gonna have to get installed with your development. And so we've kind of pre-thought through a lot of that, so the developer isn't caught in a rear, just thinking, hey, I never knew this was gonna happen. And the city's not stuck ten years later saying, hey, we ended up foreseeing this coming, so.
So, I mean, on that, since we've allowed for such a high density down by Mill Pond and the new part that's going in, have we considered that for nineteenth, considering that the school usually does back that up and we can't, I mean, you can't get around without either possibly clipping a car or a kid darting out in front of you, I mean, nineteenth is really unsafe as we all know, at certain hours and.
Pick up time?
So they conducted a.
Lock drag running down the road?
Yeah, yeah, with trucks coming down the road.
So part of the modification process and also when they applied for the major modification to allow the townhomes to increase, they were required to do a full transportation impact analysis to look at the impact of that, and they don't just look at the local streets, they look at the intersections, surrounding roads, I think they actually had to look all the way down Plymouth. Um, and all the way down the county wanted to know what the impact on Plymouth Drive was going to be because of that, and so those studies have been done and they showed the route, streets, intersections, A, B, C, D. Um, and in order to meet those criteria, they've gotta be, um, projected to stay at a B or higher in their functionality. Their traffic engineer came back and said, everything will continue to function at a B or higher if this development goes through as proposed, so we do, there's definitely check there that's in place, right? We're not just saying, go ahead and do it and we'll see what's gonna happen. And I could say that for Mill Pond, I could say that for Boulevard Apartments, like, I mean, any of these developments that have gone on, they've had to hire professional traffic engineers to look at traffic studies, traffic impacts and make accommodations accordingly. Deceleration lane on, on Boulevard Apartments, uh, that wasn't Boulevard Apartments' idea, right? That was the traffic engineer says, with these traffic numbers, you're gonna have to have a decel lane here, you're gonna have to have a lane where people can pull off to get off of the highway. Um,
and, and the problem is that the engineering design standards are for level of service of the road, like he was talking about A F R. And the road system here is able to continue to function very well from an engineering standpoint for a long time with a whole bunch more development. But that doesn't mean it's not going to change what it feels like. So what people are mostly reacting to is change of what it feels like, but honestly Chapel Road is tremendously engineering standard. But people like it that way and don't want it to change, but that's not the criteria.
Right.
The criteria is how it function.
But, but her concern is not. But her concern is not Chapel. It's the city's south door.
Well, e- even then, from an engineering standpoint and the delays that are involved getting through Nineteenth, it's not bad. It can handle a lot more traffic. It's just slow.
My challenge that, cuz I don't know if engineers are accounting for all of Nineteenth to be backed up for pickup time.
They are.
I think it's just gonna wait, we're gonna have to wait till two hundred people move into that corner and we're gonna have to wait for something to happen.
And if there's a problem, if there's a problem, it's the school that has to change their behavior, not the city in the way that the zone.
Yes, it's, you had also a study done about, you know, I don't, the Nineteenth, well, I don't know, it included Nineteenth. And this, have they taken the trucks off that Nineteenth yet?
Those were the recommendations, but the feedback is how the county fixes the intersection of Chapel and Thirteenth Street. There's no other place for the trucks to be able to go to make the turns.
Well, they could go there now. Trucks do do that.
Uh it's not advisable for them to make the turn at Thirteenth Street off of Chapel right now because of the width of the road. So they do it, but it's not what they could classify as a truck route sufficient enough to take the trucks off of Nineteenth. But we're working on it. I mean, it's, it's financial. It's a matter of one of the priorities for the county and again, the traffic counts aren't that high on Nineteenth Street to really warrant it, even though we know it would be safer. You know, we don't have three hundred trucks a day going down that street. We have a couple dozen.
And, and the other aspect of an engineering study is they look at hours, not minutes. And Nineteenth is really a problem for fifteen minutes in the morning and fifteen minutes in the afternoon. So that's never going to trigger uh an engineering requirement to uphold a level of service.
And Chris, didn't you already also find that the changes on Sixteenth, being made to Sixteenth would relieve Nineteenth to a degree?
That was a recommendation from the traffic engineers that did the school traffic and circulation study. Um when they were looking at the intersection of Nineteenth and Applegate, which everybody in town knows is a problematic area for fifteen, twenty minutes in the morning and same in, in the evening. Their, their top recommendation to alleviate that was to punch Sixteenth Street through at the elementary school, which will allow for traffic to not have to go up to Nineteenth Street and, and Applegate in order to make the cut across to the elementary school. They'll be able to take Cedar up and across that way, which will alleviate a lot of congestion up there. They say, I mean, based on everything they're looking at and the traffic flow and they came out before school and after school, they looked at the traffic patterns and they went back and ran their calculations and that was their top recommendation, which we're doing this summer, right? So it's like, we are taking proactive steps to make Nineteenth Street safer. Um we added the lane delineations in front of the primary school for pickup areas. That was a big concern that came back from the survey. Um we've discussed taking the roads off of Nineteenth Street. I feel like we, we have a plan on how to make that happen. We just don't have the money or the jurisdiction to make that happen, you know, sort of giving a bunch of money to the county to fix that. But there's, there's bigger issues at Thirteenth and Chapel than just space. There's also some elevation issues there with flooding, as we all know. Um so it's a, it's a, it's a money, it's a, it's a money drain. Take a lot of money to fix if you can fix it at all, but there's a plan there. So in the meantime, there's other things we're at Nineteenth. We're looking at other improvements at Nineteenth and Main Street for the improvements of the crosswalk there. Benton County's gonna come in and here in, I think, next summer, most of Nineteenth Street. Um so we're working with them on striping and things as well, which will hopefully help a little bit. Um.
Well, even, even the center turn lane off from Nineteenth onto the-
That was added recently.
Was added because of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure that helped.
It did a lot.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, so we are, yeah, I, I think Chair Connor's position is right and it's sometimes hard to look at objectively because we all drive on these streets and we know what they feel like. But for, again, from an engineer's standpoint, what they're looking at when you're looking at safety or when the county's got, you know, we only have so much money and we have to prioritize projects. And so we're looking at what are the worst areas in the county? And I can tell you, we've seen the data, Chapel and, you know, Nineteenth Street and Chapel and Thirteenth is nowhere near the middle of that range of all of the problems in Benton County that are safety concerns and have high congestion. And we just don't quite have those numbers. And so we may not like it. We might have preferences, but unless we have the money to put towards those projects, we're not gonna see it as a high priority for the county or the state or anybody else. So it is a matter of prioritization and, and, you know, I, I always, whenever I get frustrated with traffic in Flemish, I go visit my parents in Salem. And I'm like, thank goodness I live in Flemish. And that's just Salem traffic. When you go up to Portland or any of the metro, it's like, holy smokes, can't wait to get back to Flemish. And then you come here, it's like, yeah, I had to wait three seconds before I could pull out on Chapel. How inconvenient, you know?
Yeah.
Um so it is perspective and what we get used to, but that's, it's hard to look objectively and I totally get that.
I have a question. Could you resend the link to that interactive um
Sure.
map again? Because I know I got it a long time ago, but I don't actually know.
I had to dig for a while to find it. Is there a reason it's hidden so deeply on the website? Do we not want anyone reading it?
To make it on the website?
Um, other than, I don't think ours gets updated by as frequently as like the Benton County G I S system does. We're always careful to not put bad information out there.
Yeah.
Um property line, we already looked about it. I mean, that's been a year ago and it's not updated on our yet. I don't know if it's updated on the counties yet, but I would guess it probably is on the counties if we pulled the county G I S map. So there's a few anomalies like that that we try to avoid putting bad information out.
I'd like to um try it over to City Planner to maybe just give us a preface as to what this is and why it's here?
We will be very, very.
Alright.
Very. How late it is. Probably the key item in this section, the one that we've been talking the most about and thinking the most about and which will probably revise heavily further based on model code, which is a little bit more applicable to the city, um is the section on plan development. I believe that is page sixty-four. Yeah, about there. That's, I got that part. Yeah, um and the old section is the master plan development, master plan unit development. I had just skimmed down in between a wash for Corvallis, just giving you something to look at.
That's where this came from?
Yeah, so we can all, yeah, explains a lot.
Explains a lot.
I'm sure.
I'm sorry.
I'll keep, I'll keep my mouth shut now.
Where did it come from?
This was for out of Corvallis's. I had, I had.
None of the references worked and, and there's oddities.
And, and Chris and I were talking, we were going to reference probably a different model code. Um unfortunately, the D L C D, right now, I need to get in touch with them. Um they're actually in the process of revising their own code, so it's not on their website. But we have a few towns which um have applicable standards. And really, I just wanted to get something in front of you to look at, to ask. You, I guess, understanding the purpose of a planned unit development, also called master plan development on our old code. What would you like to see out of it? What did you see in this that might worth salvaging out of this? Maybe it's gonna be forward. I wanted to just kind of very big picture, open it up um on this section because it's the one that we've been talking about.
What would trigger, uh, what are we calling it? Plan unit?
Plan unit development, plan development.
What would trigger that? Like, what is the minimum requirements that would cause a developer, whoever, to have to um abide by this chapter?
Their request. It would be, it would be requested by the developer, the owner. And essentially, they're going to identify constraints within our existing code that don't allow the property to be um used in what they believe is its most useful.
Configuration.
So for disclosure, didn't read this part. Is that language in here or is that the kind of feedback you're asking for is what do they have to submit? So first of all, I assume it's a conversation with the city saying, hey, we wanna submit uh uh plan development. And so then what are the requisites of the plan that they're gonna submit?
So, uh taking a step back, I mean, it's an alternative route for development and alternate set of procedures um that the developer might call upon, say, they're doing neighborhood planning and natural features that they're trying to preserve. And uh it's very unlikely that they'd be able to preserve them under the conventional set of rules for residential development. They can say, we'd like to do this. They propose something and then under these standards, we look at it and like Chris said before, give it a thumbs up or thumbs down. So it's uh uh it's a little bit wider in scope, um what it's kind of used for and um uh the idea is just to allow more flexibility uh for the developer regarding things like natural features or some kind of different set of uses that we're trying to capture.
A pretty good definition. When you get to page eighty-seven, I think you have to get in a little way. But it talks through, once you get through the details of it, it kinda goes out in the general and talks about plan development modification. Section identifies the processes that can get through, purposes of a plan development modification are listed. So, you know, it's summarizing what Jason and I just said essentially is you're looking for ways to modify what's in, what would otherwise limit the development based on the code.
And disclosure, I mean, we're, this is, again, this is Corvallis is probably far too dense and not entirely appropriate code that I threw on, which is a transition from our quoted around seven pages, which I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, I don't think anybody's used, actually filed for our master plan.
Yeah, the current master plan is required if you're developing a piece probably more than ten acres. So anything more than acres, we have required them to do this master plan overlay. But it's not been effective because they're not coming with a master plan overlay and say, we'd like to do a master plan for this property. And then based on this master plan, now we're gonna come in and develop it a section at a time. They've come in and said, here's what we'd like to develop, like Mill Pond Crossing, right? Here's forty acres. Here's what we'd like to develop. Oh, by the way, we also have to do this master plan overlay. Here it is. It's conceptual, but really it's not because here's exactly what we're gonna do. Here's our site plan, right? So it's not been used effectively in Flemish. And we saw this with Mill Pond. We saw it with Letman, which is a real site. Uh we saw it with Boulevard Apartments, I believe was over that ten acres. So the current, if you're over ten acres, you have to do a, a master plan overlay has not been effective. It's an afterthought. It's an additional application fee. We run it concurrent with the site plan, the application that we're running. So we've really not used it. And it doesn't really afford you any real flexibility in the code. It's really more about an approval of your conceptual first and then you can get um essentially what it does is allow you to get approval from just the planning official for the individual sections of your plan, once the planning commission has approved your master plan overlay. So it makes the future approvals easier, more nimble to get through, but it doesn't really give you any real additional flexibility.
And did you say that this presentation is gonna be superseded by code language you like better than the Corvallis stuff?
I think so, yeah, probably.
So the best use of this, I, I read half of it.
I appreciate that.
Um but the best use of this is just to get concepts in our minds or to give us a basis for evaluating what you present next.
Yeah, and ideas and, and just, I wanted to get feedback on, on where, what you'd like to see out of this section of the code, given that it's some area where um the city's at, um maybe a bit of a blind spot in, in utilizing the best of its own.
Did I, did I read not, did I read not far enough to find the definitional section? And I, I saw, you know, right off the bat, there's a reference to capital S significant, capital N, natural capital of features. When I see things in initial capitals, I say that's, that's gotta be something. Yeah, what does that mean? Used frequently throughout the part that I did. Um, you know, whatever you present to us the next time, I'd, I'd really appreciate
Okay.
the definition being included.
Okay.
I mean, that's part of Laura and we code is
Yeah.
Add it, add stuff, definitions, fix all the references, all that stuff, but. I get, yeah, we're starting from that basis. Um general stuff that I think we should include, I'd like to discuss with everybody. Uh procedures, you know, like what is the procedure for the applicant? Uh, what are the different steps that the city takes? What are the steps that the commission takes? And then if, I, I'd like to discuss, is there, should there be anything in the procedures that the commission needs to do after the fact as far as zoning or would it just be the zone would remain within the conditional use moving forward?
Chair Connor say?
Just a few thoughts. Um actually, I think the first part of it deals almost exclusively with all the procedures for the various types of review. When I got to the part um that you referred to, Chase, it starts on sixty-four. I went, why on earth would anyone this is so hard?
Yeah.
You know, it's like, and I truly appreciate the efforts to preserve the natural. I thought that was great, but and then it goes on to go into major and minor develop, minor modifications. And it goes on to talk about how things can be, I can't recall the term, but how things can be set aside, you know? And I have to be honest, at the beginning of the meeting when Chris talked about uh land unit developments, well, clearly the reason to have those is because you can't possibly do this. So, so let's have a workaround. Let's have a way. That's stupid. Okay, let's just come up with something that works, that isn't forcible, that isn't just an afterthought. It does preserve the things we wanna preserve. Um and perhaps there is a time and a place for planned unit developments. But I admit the first thing, it makes me uncomfortable. It feels like it's not completely transparent. It feels like it's, well, this isn't really what we want, but if we do this, we probably do that.
You know, we can get around that, huh?
Yeah, and that's not why Flemish is up.
I, I think, I, and I would have to look at it, but even that seven pages or whatever, I think if you started with that as opposed to this for Valles, you can put in the things that you feel like should be there would be better. Cause I do agree that that's, there's a lot there.
Backing up all the way to the beginning, is, is there a reason that we have to address this now when we're working on the zoning and?
It was just the next section of the code that we're dealing with before we get into the specifics of landscape and all that kinda stuff. This is that next chapter. So I said, hey, yeah, Paul Corvallis, Polidair Village, look at the L C D and why don't you find some stuff and samples that you like? Let's have a discussion about plan unit developments and replacing our current master plan. And then so that's why we're just going, and this was that next big section.
This just feels like, I don't know, to me, it feels like a big bite and hard to, hard to swallow and I feel like aversion from the main thing that we've been focused on that we have, that we're climate friendly, we have to finish this other stuff, but we don't have to deal with it.
I, I'm just, I, I, yes. Going through this, this illuminant document, you know, it talks about a, a conceptual development plan and a detailed development plan. And, you know, so all of a sudden now you got two plans. It's not just one plan. It's two plans and it's really confusing on one or the other. So, yeah, I, I would, I would, I would van, I would go back to the seven pages and start to, when and if it's appropriate for, cuz I'm with Gary.
It's, it's out, it's, it's out of sequence right now, this isn't, this isn't gonna get us to what we have to get to in December of this year. I think is our deadline we're up against, I don't think this is, this.
It's too much of a.
Using the old language and putting new language in, it's gonna make any difference tools, um, but. I, I, I always, I always, and that's, I'm not sure you were here, here at that point or. My, my preference with these documents always is never to cut and paste from another document. It's always to go in to and, and edit, take the time and effort to edit a known document that we already have.
But I think it's, I think it is appropriate if, if we were gonna do that, to just take the original document, label it as City of Corvallis. Plan unit development and say, hey, this is. As a, as a separate piece.
And, and, and I think, I think in reference to, to everybody's comment, I think, uh, it would be nice when we do get these documents. Is for you to kind of write a half a page of what you really want us to do with it. What's the intent of what we're trying to do with it? That, that would, that would help, yeah, an executive summary, that, that would help us a lot in understanding the priorities, okay? What am I looking at and why am I looking at it?
Yeah, especially when we get it on a, right before a sunny holiday weekend. We should have rose.
I'm just curious about this, you know, new version that is coming from a group of. Communities that, um. Chris was telling us about, when is, when, when does that appear? You know?
When's our next meeting?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
So how much, how mu, you know, when we get that, how, how does that impact the work that we're, you know, gonna go through and do now? To evaluate, I mean, are we gonna be looking through all of this and then kind of starting over?
So I just talked to the city manager. That went through this and spent a half a million dollars in grants in three years to do theirs, I just met him last week at my conference I was at, so. That's fairly new, I started reading through his code, so I was doing it in my evenings, while my kids are watching TV in the hotel and I was reading through his code and they're like, this isn't bad, this isn't bad, this is pretty good, so. Um, that's very recent, right, more recent than, in fact, the packet was already, Chase was making the packet while I was reading other code going, oh, this is better than what we. So, we'll pull that through, what I'm hearing though is, I, I think it were best to maybe put a pin in, in the plan unit development. Let's finish getting through the development code stuff and bring that to you in pieces. And then I think once we've determined what the current standards are, then we can talk about alternative standards and the need for alternative standards, if, if that's still a need and. What I'm definitely hearing is simplified version is okay, but, um, I'm not hearing that anybody was overly opposed to. Alternative design, other than if we can't, you know, if we can do it within existing requirements, that's great. These are really meant for. Larger scale developments, so. Um, we looked at our southeast corner, for example, that's all zoned R one, if the developer came in and said, okay, we got a hundred and ten acres here. It's all R one, what if we came in and did some multifamily here and some. Commercial area here mixed in and some multifamily in this area and that's really what this is about, right? Like your current code says R one, we'd like to present a planned unit development that has all of the roads and all the parks and preserving the. The rivers and everything else and your code and your zoning don't allow for that because you've been so. Loose, it's all R one, or you've been so prescriptive that this is R one and this is the corner that's R three, but what if they, development changes that, so.
And the commercial mixed in too, right?
Right.
Cause they could put a little.
Where are you gonna put that commercial node for the barber shop and the corner market store, right? So this really is intended for more of that really big scale, not a five acre piece, but really like that larger scale. Piece on, your code doesn't let us do all of the things that we wanna do with this hundred acre site or forty acre site.
So that's what should be.
That's fine, so we can look at that in our code and going through, cause I'm with you, I mean, if, if we say it's R two, it's R two and you shouldn't just say, well, we just don't wanna do. R two, we wanna do something different, so it's, it's when it's larger than what the code allows, or it's when you do have a unique property that's got. A river running through or creek running through it. And it's like, okay, it's ten acres, but the creek runs through the middle, we only have five acres of development, can we do some more intense acreage here? If we're gonna preserve and enhance the natural creek that's running through there. That makes sense, well, either we put that into the code and say, we're gonna allow for this, or we allow for planning development says. If you have a unique lot that's got constraints, environmental things about preserve. Write us an alternative, right, and submit it and we'll take a look at it, so. But I'm hearing, yeah, I think we can fix the language and make this fairly simple and pretty straightforward. But I do think we're focused on existing code first and go back to it. The reason it's in the code now is because we just got through, if you remember, we just got through all of the different applications. All the different applications types, all the procedures, and then this is kind of that, like that next, like if none of these work. Here's an alternative procedure method and then we're getting into the actual requirements of the development, right? So this is that last section before we're getting into what we previously talked about, which was setbacks and heights and all that kind of stuff. This was just a little section of plugin, cause I knew our current, or it didn't, pardon, didn't work, but let's put a pin in it, let's. Go back through, we'll have Chase start looking at all of the actual provisions for site development and, um. Site development and development review. And then we'll circle back to this at the end, I think is in addition.
Um, I have a very specific question, since I have all these subject matter experts here. What is solar access and why do you measure it on November twenty-first?
Yeah, that was. Why, why wasn't, why wasn't it the winter solstice, why wasn't December twenty-first if you were gonna measure it on a date?
Why did, why did we nine and three?
Because it says so.
When, when, when Chase, Chase said where it came from, that was. Hey, now I get it. Doesn't make any sense.
Full eclipse. Our, our longitude latitude. Also a couple of novelists on the planning of Corvallis when they developed this.
If you guys all take what you got prior to this weekend. Put it on top of what you got this weekend, it all will help you kind of follow along what Chris was talking about. And if, I, if, you may remember that, that's the very first page, what we got a couple of months ago or whatever.
You mean the March eighteen?
I don't know. Oh, yes, March eighteen.
So, um, we have a meeting?
Yeah, we'll bring you comp plan policies for housing, we'll bring you an updated zoning map with some recommendations for housing. Um, I'll work on that end and then Chase is gonna work on whatever's next. Yeah, the contents there as far as site plan. Mostly in the commercial industrial.
How soon do we get to the language?
Next, yeah, I think, yeah, next time, yeah, so I'll have, oh, policies, I was expecting him to. Well, he'll probably do.
R four, R seven.
It'll be delegated.
What about, what about?
So when we get that now?
I think it would be good to talk about the climate friendly area.
Okay, unless you really feel like. It's not gonna go away.
Is John, John Di Lorenzo writing in on my white forest to get injunctions?
We're taking a serious look on. What communities should have been included and which communities should have not been included with the state rules. And the legislature might have to fix it, so it might be a little while, like next legislative session, but. We've, there's an active group pursuing smaller communities that are within M P Os that are having to. Design for urban growth or very rural. And I don't know how far it will go, but there's an active group going for that, many of the same people that challenged D L C D on the original. C F A language in the first port and the judges came back and said, your, your complaint is too broad, you need to be specific and so they're coming back. Very specific. So it's, I won't say it's going away, but I will say it's, it will continue to be challenged. There are many people in the state that feel like D L C D has overstepped their rulemaking authority in these climate friendly areas. There should have been legislative matters and they should or, and or, they should have been left to local jurisdictions to determine them for themselves within their. Home rule authority and the state is. They were so aggressively chipping away at home rule authority with land.
Well, I think we should press on to completing our rezone.
Absolutely.
Independent of that overlay and we can talk about that overlay.
We'll figure out where to put it.
If it's still a thing and we have a deadline, but we have this other work that we need to accomplish.
Regardless. Well, we'll need to, we will need to establish a climate friendly area, I don't think we're gonna, that's not gonna go away between now and the end of the year. So that'll be a next legislative session type thing. Well, we'll have to designate an area, I, I've said from the get-go. I think that our downtown core area, and I think the things that we're doing are pretty. I wouldn't say overly progressive, but we're definitely being responsive to the needs of the community and we are making ways to have. Residential developments of all different sizes, affordability levels, all that, I think we've been very proactive in doing that and very mindful of that. So I, I don't feel like we're dragging our knuckles saying, no, we're not gonna do anything, you know, wanna make any changes, I think we've been very forthcoming and. I do think a lot of the code we already have and we've already talked about is gonna be almost in lockstep with the climate friendly area.
Except for a lot of our houses anywhere.
And parking lot.
I would said one word about parking night, I don't.
You just did, we're having a jerk.
So I have a question for everyone, does anyone feel like we need to talk about the outline of the climate friendly area in the next few months? Is that urgent or can we just table that until we get further down the road?
Summer beginning of fall. It could almost, I could almost argue, could be a last minute thing, this is what it is, fine go. Be done what we're supposed to do.
Once we get there, there'll be things to talk about.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, but I think we should keep it in the back of our mind.
Oh, yeah.
That we don't wanna paint ourselves into a quarter.
Yeah.
Where we can't.
Yeah.
I don't think we are, I agree with what Chris said, yeah, we're not, we're not painting, we're not doing that, so.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're pretty much doing what they want to accomplish.
Unless, unless we change some drastic zones inside here. Okay, so our next meeting is, um. April fifteenth.
Would you gonna say something about the? Lot size?
Oh, I thought, I thought a lot of people are.
You didn't, so I just, I will, uh.
Turn, turn the comments off.
You can show track changes without.
Yeah.
Thank you for providing page numbers.
And darker boulder draft, right? Lighter blue.
Lighter.
Or smaller blue font, actually. Uh, when you do update that.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, can, can you send us, email us a PDF version also?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, I think.
Every paper version is great for in the meeting, but.
Whatever we get is always available on the city website.
But I can, I can, I can send you a.
Part of the agenda.
Whatever. Is supposed to be on the website as a.
Part of the.
Graphic.
Okay.
Yeah. What inspired our guest?
You just go to City Flemeth and you go to the planning commission website and their agenda is.
On the agenda and it's the agenda plus it.
I said, I like this version, cause I can keyword search for stuff, we, you know, we gotta use.
Actually, it's easier to read the draft with the draft. Robbed out on it.
I can't do anything on the paper. Yeah.
Yeah.
You have no idea what the font is there, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you all, see you in two weeks, meeting adjourned.